What does this mean?[264.33-268.54][S15] It basically means that we will move start time back to nine o'clock for both Wauwatosa[268.94-270.54][S15] East and West.[270.54-276.86][S15] And this entails that the school day will end at four oh seven rather than the current[276.86-278.02][S15] time which is three oh seven.[278.02-282.74][S15] Why, moving back the start times will match the natural circadian rhythms of the adolescent[282.74-284.26][S15] teenagers attending schools.[284.26-288.86][S15] This basically means it matches their nat- natural clock, not your natural body clock.[288.86-297.86][S15] So they will in turn sleep more, which more sleep contributes to better grades, better[297.86-308.14][S15] performance, and all that beneficial, beneficial stuff that we need students to basically[310.22-312.14][S15] have while they are in school.[312.86-317.86][S15] Twenty percent of all students right now in America admit to sleeping through at least[317.86-319.33][S15] one of their first two classes.[319.33-326.26][S15] Meaning that if we move these start times back and these kids get more sleep, that[326.26-329.94][S15] will cut down on the amount of class that they sleep through, meaning that they will[329.94-333.34][S15] be attentive and learning more than they are right now.[333.34-340.54][S15] And with these sleep deprived kids, they will most likely suffer from sleep debt, which[340.54-345.34][S15] is more likely, or cause them to be more, more likely to suffer from depression, experience[345.34-351.14][S15] so- social diversion, which means feeling apart from their peers, and even help them[351.14-354.62][S15] turn to alcohol and/or drugs, which of course we do not want. Also, well, the Wauwatosa School District is not a busing school district.[360.42-362.94][S15] We do not provide transportation to, for the students.[362.94-369.34][S15] So that extra hour will allow for students to find all, better alternatives to get to[369.34-372.54][S15] their schools on time and like be ready to learn. Also, in high school, the top two grades, twelfth and eleventh grade, usually are made[381.86-386.34][S15] up of students that range from the age of sixteen to eighteen.[386.34-390.86][S15] And these kids, as you may know, usually have their driver's license.[390.86-394.34][S15] And when kids have their driver's license, that means that they can quite possibly drive[394.34-395.74][S15] themselves to school.[395.74-401.26][S15] And if they are sleepy, that means that there's a more, or they're more than likely to cause[401.26-403.54][S15] some type of accident with their cars.[403.54-411.86][S15] And if we can cut down on this, on these chances for these kids to like endanger their[411.86-415.66][S15] surroundings, this means that we will get a safer campus for all students and pedestrians[415.66-418.74][S15] for both Wauwatosa East and West.[418.74-426.86][S15] Now, the main conflict that we may experience with this new policy is with athletics.[426.86-433.02][S15] Now, a large, large proportion of kids in both schools are involved in some type of,[433.02-435.34][S15] some type of athletic program, one way or another.[435.34-441.26][S15] And most of the time when kids have meets, games, events, they need to be pulled out[441.26-443.86][S15] of school half an hour to an hour early, sometimes even more.[444.14-450.54][S15] And now, moving the start time back, this means that they may be missing even more school,[450.54-452.14][S15] which of course is a problem. But the prob, or the kicker is with kids knowing what stor, what sports they will be participating in, they can more than, or they can for sure check out which zero hour classes they could take rather than missing school. Also, the increase in attendance may easily make up for the losses due to like their athletic program, meaning that if they are, rather than missing a day of school or missing the first two hours due to sleepiness or even an accident, they will then gain back those hours lost by being pulled out of school. Also, the students are told quite frequently by their coaches, they're students first, then athletes. Every student has some type of, or every athletic program has some type of minimum grade requirement for all of them, meaning that they must have at least a certain letter grade in each class. So that, and like they stress that in front of every single, every single student athlete. And they should really have this imprinted in their brains, knowing that if they are going to lose too much time due to athletics, they should take school. Like, schools should take a priority over their, over their sports. And as a school district, our goal is to improve academics. And this is like a surefire way to improve them without a doubt, due to the intense studies done by Minnesota State, Michigan State, Florida State University, Cal Tech even. They all came up with conclusive evidence showing that moving school times back and allowing kids to get more sleep will result in better grades and better academic performance.
I would like to add something just to clarify what Joe was saying about the studies done like Minnesota and stuff. What they did is they pushed the start time one and a half hours later, and teachers noticed that this led to improved attendance. Students ate breakfast more often, which leads to better nutrition and health for the students, and they completed homework more effectively, and they even saw a slight grade increase. Thank you.
Do the principals have anything to add?
Personally, I believe that as a school juristic district, we are not employers and our first goal is not to exceed in athletics. I know that a lot of people are doubtful about the effects that, that raising the school time would have on athletic, on athletics, on kids getting jobs, and I understand that we need to have our kids be doing things that they enjoy. We need them to be saving money for college. But as a teacher, my first and foremost goal in my school is to provide for the safety and future of my students. The only way that I can help them do that is through education. I cannot provide them college, college scholarships through football or soccer, volleyball, whatever it may be, but I can do what I can do best to make sure that when they are in my school, they are not sleeping, and they're, they are here, and I think this is the best way to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for Superintendent Utchig or Mr. Bechtel? Ms. Rex?
Do you think this would improve the overwhelming amount of tardies to classes, not just first hour, but throughout the day?
Now, I cannot comment on throughout the day, but within the first few hours of the day, there will be a subs, or theoretically, there will be a substantial increase in people being on time and to their classes while being attentive and learning throughout the entire hour.
Mr. Patton?
Will this cost the district any extra money?
This will not, due to the hours essentially being shifted one hour later. The wait, or the hours of the teachers will be the same, the hours of, of all the staff will be the same, hours of the utilities being used will be the same just one hour later.
Ms. Cortez?
Do you think it's possible that students, knowing that they have an extra hour until they get to school, will then stay up later and then sleep in and then change their circadian rhythms to that clock?
Well, the circadian rhythm, while it can be influenced by, by an actual human themselves, tends to stick around eleven PM. Studies have shown that kids will almost always fall asleep, no, or not before eleven PM on a daily basis. And of course, they may feel like they can stay up later, but they are also more inclined to wake up at eight PM rather than later towards the nine PM range, which is when the school day would start.
Ms. Lashewski?
So, I know that crossing guards, they're employed by the city and not by the school district, so would, I guess, would the schools be working with the cities so that the crossing guards could be able to help students cross that are in high school as well as middle school and elementary school, or?
Uh, yes. The school district will definitely have to work with the city on that one. While it is only the high schools that we would be switching the time for, that means that we would have only a few crossing guards to shift their hours later than they are right now.
If I may add something, the crossing guards will also, although it'll be an uncomfortable, maybe uncomfortable, maybe clumsy change, they'll probably be working in better, better working conditions. Obviously, we live in Wisconsin, we live in somewhere where it's really, really cold in the morning, and it gets really a lot warmer very quickly through those morning hours, so having someone out there from six, seven, to eight, or eight, nine, ten is, I think, a lot, probably going to be beneficial for the crossing guards, and I think that they'll be, well, they'll be happy with that change.
Any other questions? Okay. Having heard the board's questions and comments, now is the time for public comment on the motion to consider changing the start time to nine AM at the high schools. If you wish to make a comment, please come forward to use the mic, begin by saying your name and school. I would like to ask you to keep your comments as brief as possible and to avoid repeating comments that have already been made. If you're here as a group, you may want to have one, one spokesperson state your concerns. Also, to be sure that we have adequate time to deal with tonight's agenda, we may find it necessary to limit comment on this agenda item. Now is the time to speak before we vote.
Hi, I'm Shannon Seltzer. I go to Divine Savior Holy Angels, and I was wondering how much do you think the sophomores and freshmen will be able to use the nine AM start time because their parents will have to drive them, and so they'll probably have to go to school around seven thirty anyway, so it won't really be benefiting them. So how do you think you will?
This is a comment section? If you, if you would, if you'd like to ask a question, I'm pretty sure Superintendent or any of the principals or the director would be happy to answer them at some other time. Any other comments? All right, we will proceed to voting. Ms. Lau, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtley?
No.
Ms. Cortez?
No.
Ms. Lashewski?
No.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsire?
No.
Ms. Rex?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt? The motion to consider adopting a new start time of nine AM at the high school carries by a vote of five to four.
Our next item of business involves eliminating finals week in high schools. Mr. Patton, would you please read the action item?
It is recommended that the school board consider eliminating finals week in the high schools, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Aye, second.
Okay. Superintendent Utchig?
I'll call forward Alontra Wright and Kiara Hubbard Harris to discuss with us this issue about eliminating the finals week at the, for students.
Okay, eliminating finals week in high schools. Finals week is a structured week that is set aside specifically for teachers to test students on what they have learned throughout the semester. Students are given seventy-five minutes to take their exam, and there are two exam slots per day. Final week was created in order to provide enough time for students to take a written exam and show their teachers what they have learned in the course. It was also created to resemble college exams.
What's the problem? Time is given to students during exam week to take a test. However, teachers assign students to work on projects before exam day. When exam day comes around, students are in the classroom listening to classmates present projects, not retaining any information. The student's grade does not rest on their attentitive, attentiveness or retention of any other student's presentations. This takes away from the learning environment. The way exam week is being used, it is clear that it is benefiting teachers with downtime to grade and prepare for next semester or year.
Also, more problems. Academic time is wasted giving, giving out exams rather than teaching. Students take a seemingly random pause from academic learning in the middle of the year, allowing their academic rhythm to be disturbed. It also causes scheduling conflicts for parents and students as well as potential problems for neighboring businesses. Parents have to bring their kids to school later for exams or pick them up at like twelve, where they might be at work and not be able to provide a ride for their child. And as far as businesses, students like to roam around, so they might get into trouble.
I know we actually, I don't know how many of you guys live on the west side, but we have the problem with Mayfair, with the flash mob that happened there. We don't want anything like that to happen again, and the way that the businesses have rescheduled their scheduling, their rules or whatever is, is that, so that, to prevent students who will be getting out of school to going there and causing another disruption, another scene that looks, that appears negative towards our community, and they just aren't simply, they don't have the resources to adapt to a random finals week in the middle of the school year.
The solution to eliminating finals week, by limiting exam week, schools wouldn't eliminate exams that are taken. Instead, each school will have a regular length school day, but inside each class time, an exam will be given. Exams will follow more real life situations with the usage of a project or a student is given a case study, thus using the student's acquired knowledge from the semester to answer the case study as a whole. This will actually promote growth of the knowledge over memorizing facts that will be soon forgotten in the incoming year.
More solution benefits. It promotes individuality and prevents cheating when you have the teacher giving it out during their regular scheduled class time. It mirrors college exams, since colleges do not typically have their students take seven exams over three to four days. Also, teachers will be encouraged to give more feedback to help the students obtain knowledge necessary to move forward. Eliminating finals week forces students to be unable to exempt, so they have to show their teachers their growth from the semester, meaning that they have to actually learn.
So finally, the truth. By eliminating final exam week, students will be encouraged to actually learn and understand the materials the teacher has given them based off real world, real world situations and/or college expectations, instead of cramming knowledge that will be forgotten over a month of time to be able to prepare for the future.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? From, from?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for Superintendent or the director? Ms. Lashewski?
At the end of the school year, when there's extra class time where they're not going home, instead they're staying in school after exams, what will that be used for?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Oh, yeah, like the, the, since the school day would be the regular length, then would, what would the extra class time where they're not taking exams, what would that be used for?
We would still have regular class time, and they could be either maybe helping the teachers prepare for next, next year, maybe gaining extra feedback for stuff they didn't understand fully.
Instead of cramming, which is, it's an outdated, it's a poor practice, and it's itself, they'll be learning the old fashioned way in school and in class, getting more time, more bang for your buck if you will.
This is just for students to just gain more feedback and learn more of the material so they won't be going into the next year or semester saying like, oh, I remember this, but I don't remember how to do it, so it just cuts back on confusion.
Ms. Cortez?
You mentioned that you would switch the tests to a more case study kind of thing. What, what would be an example of that? So like for like a math class, wouldn't you change it from a normal test?
A case study doesn't apply to every class, but it is an option for our teachers. A case study would be probably like the challenge course where they have to do a project.
I think lots of classes are already switching to project based exams, so like in the end, well, like for math class, it'd be harder to make a project based exam that like requires creativity, but, so that would probably be still a more traditional test. But in other classes, it would be like a case study or like a project so that a student can demonstrate their like creativity, and if a student is not go to taking tests, they have a better chance of doing well on a final exam. And then the last days of school would be used to be presenting those exams, and when you're presenting projects in class, it's easier to involve the entire class, so there's less time wasted on a day if you have a project based exam in a class, and then you still have to come in on the allotted seventy-five minutes for exam day and just do nothing, so.
Also, if it was like for a math class, we instead of giving a, a student maybe like eighty problems to do in them a certain amount of time, we'd maybe give them maybe ten or fifteen problems, and then they would have, those ten and fifteen problems would retain like all the information they have learned over the entire semester.
Ms. Rex?
Do you think this would improve students' performances and scores on the exams?
I think so, because it allows them to use their resources outside of the classroom to benefit them on their projects or the test with the math. By using their resources, they're learning a life skill, I would argue.
I don't know exactly who it was, but I believe, I remember reading a quote that said something like, if you judge a fish on its ability to climb a tree, it will go its entire life believing it's stupid, or something like that. I don't remember the exact quote. But it's, basically the message of it is that no individual student is just like his or her peer. You move to more of a project based, more creative, open ended, based way for students to display their knowledge, you're not just giving, handing them a formulaic thing to figure out, it's not yes or no, it's a do you understand, or do you need more help?
Mr. Kurtley?
Will this in any way affect the second semester final exam for many AP classes that acts as a practice AP test?
I can address that. The, class would still be able to give that, it just wouldn't cause a final exam grade, it would be, one could consider it just a test, or teachers could still consider that final exam just wouldn't have as big of an impact, like they were saying how there wouldn't be like huge, large periods. So they could still, teachers would still have the option to give out practice AP exams to prepare their students. It just wouldn't be considered a final exam.
Also, in AP classes, the students that sign up for them are students who are like very up for academic rigor, so the exams for those classes can be more traditional, like having a practice AP exam as a final assessment is acceptable because the students who sign up to those classes know that that's what they're going to be signing up for.
Mr. Patton?
Would there still be an option for teachers to give a final exam tests? Because I know there are students that are better at taking tests and they are creating case studies and creativity like that.
That option would still be available, although we wouldn't give the allotted time. They would have to do it between their class periods, so they might have to split it up between two days.
Mr. Ramsire?
So, as a clarification, we're eliminating final exam week and turning the assessment into more of a do you understand project that include real world situations and things like that, but I guess I'm just a tiny bit confused as to why there's not real world situations being incorporated into the entire year and everything. So, I mean, like how much of a curriculum change is this going to, you know, have to be? For teachers, how, how does this change the way they teach, or not necessarily the way they teach, but I just, I know that the, the structure kind of, when teachers, their courses are set- I just, I know that the, the structure kind of, when teachers, their courses are set, are kind of having a hard time trying to articulate this.
Um, I think that by changing, getting rid of elimination or eliminating finals week, teachers would just have to teach the same subject and maybe just tell them how to apply it more. I know some students don't get the application part in their curriculum and that's something that we need to focus on.
And this does kind of apply with the district's uh trend towards more knowledge based grading and uh testing student on their knowledge, not necessarily on their memorizing skills, which we find increasingly important in today's uh business world.
And like, we're not trying to change the entire curriculum that uh the school already has. We're just trying to make it more possible for the students to be able to understand what the information is being given. And if they don't, just give them more opportunities to uh give feedback on how they can understand and what they can do to make sure they can be successful in the future.
And perhaps more importantly, carry their skills onto them later on in life.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ramsayer?
So, this is still being graded, correct? Like this, this is ass- assessment is still like a grade. What exactly will this look like on a student's report card?
I mean, it's up to the teacher to create the rubric and grade the project as it needs to be graded.
As the district is moving to a four point scale, it fits in perfectly with the vision that they have towards the future. Four point scale is meant so that they, it's a, I know it, I need more help with it, I kind of know it and I, or I don't know it. If you have a project, it fits perfectly because you're not, it's not formulaic, like I said before.
And we won't punish you if you didn't know it at the beginning of the semester. If at the end of semester, you show growth and knowledge in what the information you have, teachers can go back and change, maybe your, oh, your one or two, two or three or four.
Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on. Uh, before the school board takes a vote on this proposal, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Again, I ask you to state your name and school and to keep your comments brief and to the point. It'd be best to hear from you guys before we take a vote. Okay, um, since there was since there was no uh community comments, the board will now vote on the motion to require student representation on hiring committee for teachers and administrators at the student. We were on the, we were on the wrong part of the. Okay, uh, the board will now vote on the motion to consider eliminating finals week in the high schools. Uh, Ms. Lau, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Kurtley?
No.
Ms. Cortez?
No.
Ms. Leszewski?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Mr. Ramsayer?
Yes.
Ms. Rex?
No.
Mr. Bolt?
Guess it'll be the no?
The motion to consider the elimination of finals week in the high schools fails by a vote of nine to, or seven to two.
Our next item of business is under human resources. Mr. Farr, would you please read the item?
It is recommended that the school board require that students have a representative on the hiring committees for high school teachers and administrators, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
I second that motion.
Okay, uh, Superintendent Otchik?
Uh, I will call forward our Director of uh Human Resources, uh Maddie Jordan, uh to work in conjunction with our principals to discuss this issue.
The topic I am presenting to the board and members of the public today is that of whether students should be allowed on the hiring committees to hire teachers. For those of you who are not familiar with the process, there are hundreds of applicants that apply for every teaching job. After a lot of examine, examining of the applicants, the long list of eligible teachers is whittled down significantly. It is at this stage where there are only a few applicants left, that they are each interviewed by a hiring committee in order to get multiple opinions on the possible new teacher. It is in this hiring committee that we suggest allowance for high school students. The opinion of the students, after all, it after all, the teacher is the most influential factor of school. And research so, shows the most important skill for a teacher is the ability to create relationships with students. Based on this information, who better than a student to predict the teaching abilities of a teacher? With a student or two on the hiring committee, we would be provided with a primary source to tell us firsthand how the students will react and respond to the teachers in question. The student would know, based on their opinion and their experiences with their peers, whether they feel the student, yeah, whether they feel they could learn from the teacher. And whether students would feel safe and comfortable going to the teacher for help. Teachers, after all, are meant to be more than lecturers at this level of learning. They should also be supports for the students if necessary. We need schools to be safe environments and teachers play a huge role in that by being people for students to trust and seek advice or help from. On the other side of the argument, some may say it would be difficult to find interested students willing to commit their time. To this, we suggest informing students on the impact their opinion would have and reminding them of the importance of a good teacher. In addition, being on a committee such as this would look good on a resume for college or a career considering the skills of speaking and maturity that would be involved. This brings up another opposing idea. Can students handle the secrecy that would be involved? Students would not have any access to the human resources files. And the committee would have students give their opinions on matters purely based on the character of the teacher. Also, to get mature students, the process of selecting the best students to join the committee could be similar to that of the mock school board. By this, uh, I mean existing teachers would recommend students and those students would be informed about the hiring committees and asked if they would be interested. The teachers would be asked to keep characteristics in mind such as maturity, reliability, ability to speak with others without being shy, listening abilities and abilities to respect the opinions of not only themselves, but also of their peers. These students would all be in ha- be high school students, to make sure they are mature. The way in this would work would be that a small group of students would be selected out of the students recommended by teachers and interested. And two of the students at a time would be chosen to be present at the next committee. This would allow for backups if a student cannot make the next meeting. Two students on the committee at a time would hopefully give the students involved more comfort, so they would be able to voice their opinions with more ease and confidence. Two students would allow for greater confidence without overpowering the student opinion on the committee. As that will be all, I thank you for listening and I return attention back to the board.
Any comments by uh superintendent or?
I have nothing more to add, uh, thank you.
Principals?
Um, one of the only things that she didn't cover in her excellent presentation was the effect that this would have on minorities in schools. Having people from uh clubs such as uh Black Student Union, Asian Student Union, Gay Straight Alliance, things like that would be, I think, really beneficial to diversifying the environment that we have within our schools and within the educational community here at Wauwatosa, in Wauwatosa School District. So um, I think that would have an important implication, not only on um employing more diverse types of people from different backgrounds, but also exposing the kids who go to our schools to a more real world diversified environment.
Okay, uh, we'll now move to uh board members' questions and comments. Please ask, raise your hand, Mr. Jackson?
How big of a say would the students have on hiring the teacher?
Um, again, I would recommend two students per hiring committee. Um, that way, there would still be the uh adults and others that were already on the committee, just the addition of two students, so the uh student body, the voice of the student body could be heard without it being overpowering.
Also, um, the students' opinions wouldn't be the deciding factor of any hires. It would merely be a character reference for when people are considering hiring a teacher.
Uh, Mr. Farr?
Do we think that uh one or two students is enough, seeing that we have a very diverse um school district with many different kinds of kids, would one or two be enough or should we potentially add more? Cause then you only have the voices of two students representing the whole student body.
I think the number is something to play with right now, I think it should be really representative of the uh entire school makeup in general, uh such as a lot of different colleges have sort of application, uh real world, real world demographic applica- um application screening, such a thing, like, things like that, I think.
I would also like to add that um when the teachers consider which students they would recommend for these uh committees, they would have students in mind that would not only represent their own opinions, but represent the opinions of their peers as well.
Uh, Mr. Patton?
Uh, do you believe that students have the self-control to um be on a hiring committee and look at the teacher as if an educator, not just somebody they can like well?
I can answer this question. Um, as uh some of my colleagues uh iterated, uh, the students' say is not a deciding factor, so I don't know if that's as big of a problem uh due to the fact that it's um, the student is just a kind of a character reference and is not going to completely influence uh the principal's decision on the hiring.
Also, with the selectivity of the students that go on the board, I think that the teachers who recommend them would be able to see which students would be capable and willing to look at each teacher analytically instead of just judging them by their personality or even appearance. They would pick students who can decide whether they think that the teacher would be very effective at teaching.
Ms. Leszewski?
Would the high school students be only on the hiring boards for high school teachers or also middle and elementary schools?
I think the main um, the main goal of this is to create a deeper teacher-student relation. Uh, not only does it have implications in the classroom, within the learning environment, but it also has implications as far as dropout rates. Um, I know there have been studies done that one of the most important factors when contributing to dropout rates is the environment that the t- student feels with his school, if he feels connected, he or she feels connected to their school, he is more likely, he or she is more likely not to drop out and to stay in school, receive more education. And not only does that definitely help the school district, definitely look good on the school district, but it, I don't think people realize how much um, it costs the community to have dropouts. It really um adds up really quickly, it's a, not only would help our school district, but it would help the envi- and the entire Wauwatosa community and surrounding communities as well.
Also, um, for middle school and elementary school, um, I think that this policy would be best to try it in the high school first, but then we could expand to middle and elementary school. And I don't think that we should have elementary schoolers on a board to hire their own teachers, but I think that eighth graders are capable of the analytical um thinking that you would need to think about whether a teacher is really effective. So an eighth grader could represent the middle school and potentially the elementary school as well.
Uh, Ms. Rex?
Do you think that if uh students have a say in their own teachers, would this, do you think this would improve grades or do you think it would just improve student-teacher relationships?
Um, student-teacher relationships in turn, um, thank you, uh, improve grades. So, in answer to your question, I would think yes. Uh, students involved on the committee would uh cause kind of a domino effect to improve grades as well.
Not just think their statistics, it's been proven to work.
Uh, Mr. Pet?
Uh, would the district have to spend more money paying the students for their time on the committee?
I think, I think that um, uh, a place on this committee would be a privilege for students. And while it would help the school board, it would still be a privilege for them, cause it's their chance to have a say, so I don't think that the school board would pay them.
Yeah, kind of, the reward is being able to kind of have a say in who gets hired for your school, who your teachers may be, not necessarily like a paycheck.
Uh, Mr. Ramsayer?
So, this seems, the, the goal here is to uh give students, it seems to give students the uh ability to choose and, you know, they have more of a say, but, I mean, does this give students more of a power to pick and choose their own teachers? Um, I mean, let's say they hired a specific person because of, um, you know, specific reasons and because they might teach a certain way that's beneficial to them. And how will they get to have that teacher, or how, is it? How does that uh, I mean, how does that affect the? How does that affect students in a way of picking classes and just, in what way is the students more empowered, wow?
Well, the students, although they would be on the committee, they would not be given full power. Uh, I would like to point out, not only is this after quite a bit of screening, but again, this isn't, the students do not have the final say. It's just their opinion and everyone else on the committee will also have their opinions as well. And then uh there will be a choice based on the opinions of everyone, not just the opinions of the students.
Also, the uh, the point of the committee to having students on it would be to just get, like, those two students wouldn't necessarily be directly like, they might not take that teacher's class later, but the point of it is to get teachers that students think are really effective at teaching, who can like form good relationships with te- with students into the school. So it wouldn't necessarily affect every student directly, but as more teachers are hired that get along with students, it would just, it would add more positivity to the entire environment.
It's not a, I like this teacher, so I wanna be in his or her class, it's a, I am a um somewhat of a minority as a student and I wanna have my voice uh represented in the process of me, of whoever I'm gonna be with for a hundred and eighty or whatever days it is a year.
Okay, Mr. Jackson?
If the student had a say in hiring the teacher at, like, at all, would the student have like the ability to choose if he's in a, in the teacher's class or none?
Um, I would think, no, they would not be able to, um, because th- the schedules will be just as random as usual. Um, they're more of there to uh express um whether or not they would, they or their uh peers would learn from the teacher, not I want this teacher, although they may want the teacher.
And the student could choose to take that, the class that that teacher takes unless it's a core academic class that they've already taken or don't need. So, it would be up to the student to take it, if it, if the class wasn't elective, that would be their choice.
Uh, Mr. Kurtley?
Um, what type of interactions between the students on the committee and the teacher would be, um, would they have before judging the character of the potential future teacher?
Um, well, I think that a good way for the students to interact with the teacher while they're on the hiring committee would be either a student-run interview or a mock lesson. So the teacher could teach like one lesson to the student and just really like show their teaching style to those students. Or it could have a student-run interview, so the student can think of questions that they think would be important in judging the teacher's character.
I, I have a question, actually. Um, as far as the anonymity of the, of the student judge, how, how does that go? Does he, he or she?
I don't think it's overly sensitive, I don't really see any teachers um being overly aggressive or like angry. I mean, I guess if you don't get the job, it could be a possible um potential reason for a teacher to be upset or, I, there'd definitely be reason to keep the student at a fair distance, but I think once they're hired, it doesn't really matter who, um, who told who, who to hire. I think, I think un- until the teacher is hired, it should be, it should remain anonymous, but then afterwards, it's open for interpretation.
Okay.
After, um, after the teacher is interviewed by the committee, then the committee, uh, the committee goes, uh, and privately, without the teacher being there, discusses opinions. So the teacher wouldn't know, like, who said what about them. So if that would be a concern about the impact of the relationship of teacher and student, it's not, no one would know what would be going on.
Okay. All right, uh, Ms. Cortez.
Um, is it possible that you could extend this policy to other sorts of jobs, like coaching staff or custodians or other things like that? I think it would be beneficial to, if it works with hiring academic teachers, to try to expand it to coaching staff and other positions in the school.
Somewhat. I think it's already, uh, kind of began to come into at least my school, um, in a few select academic, I mean, a few select athletics. For example, I know that when the football team was looking at new coaches, the football coach, I think, asked the football players what he may or may not think about their co- the potential new coach. Um, I mean, it was at like a really small scale, but I think it's an idea that's already been planted in people's head. I think it would go really easily.
Mr. Ramsayer.
Just kind of going back to the secrecy between, or the secrecy of the student committee, um, like a clarification, how would the separation of the s- the student committee and the teacher, how would that separation between them, having the teacher not know what the students think about them, how would that, uh, further benefit student-teacher relationships? If that's the ultimate goal.
Well, I think the idea of, sorry, uh, the idea of benefiting, uh, student-teacher relationships is kind of by students getting teachers they think would be better teachers and not necessarily who they personally bond with.
And if the teacher, um, if I may add, if the teacher ended up not being chosen for the position, there would be no hard feelings because the teacher wouldn't know, um, if the student, uh, if their opinion was the negative opinion or no.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to the community. Uh, before the school board takes a vote on this proposal, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? I ask you to state your name and school and keep your comments brief and to the point.
Hello, I'm Rex Seer from Wawa Tosa West. Um, I was just thinking, from a teacher's standpoint, um, you might get less people applying for a job if they felt that they were being judged by people who weren't professionally trained for judging them.
That's a good statement.
Hi, I'm Krista Casey and I'm actually from Wawa Tosa STEM Elementary. The last three years, we have, um, hired new teachers for our school. We've had anywhere between two to four finalists. And it's a really tough decision, who to put in front of kids. So we had the teachers prepare a lesson and they actually came and taught in front of fourth and fifth graders. And so I would encourage the committee to look at maybe opening up this process as to making it more of a focus group where you could get anywhere between twenty and twenty-five students, um, in front of a teacher and having them teach a lesson and then have that teacher leave the room and have the interview committee come in and hear the comments and the feedback of the students. Um, I know some of you are questioning that it might not be appropriate for little elementary kids, but you would be so surprised at their comments. We thought maybe they'd get, oh, they were really funny, or she was pretty, or, you know, he was nice. But, um, kids are offered to, um, speak to the principal and teachers about their comments, or they can write them on post-it notes if they're feeling a little bit more shy. And, um, my son came home this year and he said, it was the fourth teacher that had done a lesson in front of the class, and he said, she was by far the best. And I said, well, my, what makes you say that? And he said, because she taught us the most we didn't know. And so I think you will be really surprised. I do value, um, students' input and, um, I'm just hoping that the committee would consider this in the future. Thank you.
Very interesting. Any others? Okay, uh, we'll now move to, uh, voting on the motion to require student representation on hiring committees for teachers and administrators at the high schools. Uh, Ms. Lau, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtley?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Leszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsayer?
Yes.
Ms. Rex?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
The motion to require student representation on hiring committees for teachers and administrators at the high school carries unanimously by a vote of nine to zero.
Our next item of business is under Business Services. Uh, Mr. Jackson, would you please read the item?
There's recommended that the school board require that the building and grounds department only purchase and use natural cleaning solvents in the district buildings.
Is that a motion?
An ISO move.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
Superintendent Utchik?
Uh, I'll call forward our Director of Business Services, Colin Bartlemay, to discuss with us, uh, kind of the positive aspects of using natural cleaners in our school.
Good evening. Many, including the general public, don't think of household cleaners as pollutants. Uh, they're used in our houses and buildings, uh, very confined areas, so I don't think the thought enters many of our minds. Usually it's things like gas and landfills that get strictly associated with pollution. However, there are still chemicals in these products and they do contribute to pollution and can be extremely harmful. Your average day cleaners such as Windex, 409, Clorox, et cetera, are not only unsafe for the environment, but for our bodies as well. So I'd like to focus on the environment first. So the EPA, also known as the Environmental Protection Agency, names phosphorus, nitrogen, and ammonia, and chemicals grouped under the term volatile organic compounds as the worst environmental hazards in household cleaners. According to the Canadian Labor Environmental Alliance Society, dishwasher detergents are thirty to forty percent phosphorus. Ammonia is a multipurpose household cleaner that is found in many cleaning products, and they do everything from decreasing to sanitizing or removing allergens. And nitrogen is, uh, found in glass and surface cleaning products. Uh, this chemical is found in floor cleaners as well. And VOCs are found in a wide range of clean products. Uh, anything from whitening your clothes to removing grease, uh, from dishes and disinfectant bathroom cleaners among various other uses. And here are some of the effects they have on the environment. So nitrogen, phosphorus, and ammonia are dangerous water contaminants in large quantities. So they're, once we use our cleaning products, they're rinsed down toilets and drains, and they enter the waste treatment facilities. And then they are returned to rivers, lakes, oceans, and so on. Um, most of the pollutants are removed, um, from the water before they enter back into a large body of water. However, nitrogen, phosphorus, and ammonia are not. And, um, once released in the water, they can help cause an accelerated growth in some types of plant life. Um, the three, uh, VOCs are used in agriculture as fertilizers to help plants grow and control environments on farms. But, uh, when we're using them to clean and we wash them down drains and toilets, they are not, their levels are not controlled. So the result of this is an excessive nurmen- nourishment of some types of plant life and habitats native to aquatic animals. Uh, this can lead to dense vegetation that clogs waterways. It crowds out animal life and other marine plants. Um, so at the end of these plants' chemical accelerated life cycle, they die in very large masses. And this dec- decays and depletes the oxygen in the water. As a result as well, algae then grows and the animals, freshwater shellfish, fish, and others, they die. And the die-offs cau- cause even more decay. And eventually the water is no longer suitable for drinking, uh, cooking, or bathing. So other than the water, we also have the air. Um, you use Windex, you use 409, you spread that around in your house, uh, eventually they, the chemicals rise in the air and they condense. And then you let them outside, uh, by opening a window to air out, uh, the facility. Uh, according to the EPA, uh, the VOCs can contribute to smog, uh, which is a fogger haze combined with smoke and other atmospheric pollutants that are bad for the environment and our health. So those are the main effects on the en- the environment, but, uh, there are also effects on the, our bodies, our well-being. Uh, I'd like to list some of the chemicals that are found in these cleaners. Uh, phthalates is one of the, the main one. It's found in many, uh, fragrance household products, uh, such as air fresheners, dish soap, even toilet paper. Uh, don't be surprised if you've never heard of it because the law, uh, according to pri- priori- priority laws, um, companies don't even have to disclose what's, um, phthalates in the bottles or on the, um, ingredients. So, um, the health risk, health risks of phthalates, um, they're known as endocrine disruptors. Um, according to a two thousand and three study conducted by researchers from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in the Harvard School of Public Health, uh, men with higher phthalate compounds in their blood add correspondingly reduced sperm counts. Um, and although, uh, phthalate exposure usually go, uh, comes from inhalation, um, it'll, it can also happen through the skin. Um, and unlike the digestive system, the skin has no safeguards against the toxins. There's also percothialine or PERC. Um, you may find, you'll find that in dry cleaning solutions, spot removers, and carpet and hole upholstery cleaners. Um, PERC is a neurotoxin. Uh, the EPA actually classifies it as a possible carcinogen, which you'll find in cigarettes. Um, people who live in residential buildings where dry cleaners are located have reported dizziness, loss of coordination, and other symptoms. Um, the EPA has actually ordered a phase out of PERC, uh, in residential buildings by twenty twenty, but, uh, California is actually going a little step further and wants to eliminate all, um, PERC by the end of, uh, by twenty twenty-three because of the suspected health risks. Um, we also have tri- triclosan. Um, it's an antibacterial. Uh, you'll find that in liquid dish soaking detergents and hand soaps labeled antibacterial. Um, there's really no evidence that it's really healthier, safer, and the bacteria will, uh, get used, uh, get used to the, the soap and then will become stronger and be, and then will actually make us sicker in the future. Um, also, other studies have found, uh, the dangerous concentrations of triclosan- triclosanin in rivers and streams where it's toxitic algae. Um, another common chemical is quatarium ammonia compounds or quats. Um, they're very similar to triclosan- triclosinol. You'll find that in fabric softener, liquids, and sheets. Um, they're also going to be labeled anti- antibacterial. But, um, unlike triclosan, uh, it's also a skin irritant. Um, then we have, uh, bifealoxin, tha- biofix, theanol, sorry. Um, you'll find that in window, kitchen, and multipurpose cleaners. Um, it's really responsible for like the sweet smell that, um, you smell when using them. Um, the law does not require to be listed on the product's label, so again, if you've never heard of it, don't blame you. Uh, according to the EPA's website, uh, it can cause sore throats when inhaled and at high levels of glysole, which it, it's considered, uh, glysole. Uh, ethers can also contribute to narcosis, prelim- preliminary edema, and severe liver and kidney damage. Uh, and then we have ammonia, which I had mentioned earlier. Um, when inhaled, ammonia is going to affect people with asthma and elder pe- elderly people with lung issues and breathing problems. It really has a bad effect on the lungs. Um, so people get a lot of how, uh, ammonia exposure, like housekeepers, will often develop, uh, chronic bronchitis and asthma. Uh, the last common one that I'm going to, um, list is sodium hydroxide. Uh, it's an ex- it's extremely corrosive and, um, you're going to find that in oven cleaners and drain openers. Uh, if that gets into your skin or your eyes, it can actually cause some severe burns. So, um, what is my solution to this, to these chemicals? I say we use products that are Green Seal approved. And, um, I'll give you a little history on the Green Seal. Uh, Green Seal is a pioneer in promoting a sustainable economy. Uh, they've been doing this since nineteen eighty-nine, when there were no environmental certification programs in the US at the time. Uh, the founders had the foresight to recognize the need for a tool to help shop- shoppers find truly green products. Um, they developed the Green Seal as a nonprofit to stand for absolute integrity. Over the years, uh, the Green Seal's reputation has grown to symbolize environmental leadership. It continues to repres- represent proven green products and services. Uh, their mission is, uh, they're a nonprofit organization that uses science-based programs to empower consumers, purchasers, and companies to create more sustainable world. Uh, the vision, um, essentially it's a green economy. Uh, they want one that is as sustainable as possible, renewable with minimal impact, so that our environment, all forms of life, and other natural resources are protected, and our social needs and values are honored. All right. Um, a company that I think we should probably, should buy from is Three M. Uh, they have a large base of products that have been Green Seal approved. Um, and what Green Seal does is they evaluate product, evaluate products and from different companies. Uh, in thi- and in this case of cleaning products, uh, they check to see whether the chemicals that I mentioned earlier were, um, eliminated completely or reduced to a amount where they can be considered safe to the environment and to our well-being. All right, thank you.
Any other comments by the superintendent?
Uh, yes, I just would like to, uh, add, uh, to his statements about the, uh, negative health effects, especially for young children. So young children, their, uh, vital organs are still developing, so this damage caused by, um, these harsh chemicals will last longer. Also in addition, uh, the children are obviously smaller, um, and so they're at greater risk for being affected, um, and being compromised by these toxins. In addition, due to their small size, um, they have a reduced ability to eliminate these toxins from their systems. So kind of to summarize for the board, um, using natural cleaners will be better than using chemical cleaners because chemical cleaners are both bad for the environment and for, uh, people who would be in the building, uh, particularly, uh, young children.
Anything from the principals?
No.
Yeah, okay. Um, moving on, uh, board members, do you have any questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Leszewski?
Are students more likely to have allergic reactions to the chemicals in cleaning products, or are they more likely to have allergic reactions to some of the natural and organic cleaning products?
Probably to the products that are not natural.
Uh, Mr. Jackson?
Would this be, uh, cheaper for the district?
Unfortunately, it won't be cheaper. Sorry. Um, it, it's going to cost us probably slight, a little bit more, but, um, may I remind you that we're talking about the safety of our environment and, uh, the well-being of our students. So I don't think cost should be too much of an issue.
It's not all pros. Um, Mr. Patton?
Have all of these products been tested to make sure they are safe and, uh, don't actually do any damage to the structure or the people within it?
Yes, that is what, that is the Green Seal, that's what Green Seal does. It's the purpose.
Ms. Rex?
Would these organic and natural cleaning products do the same job as cleaning products with all those chemicals in them?
Yes, they would.
Mr. Kurtley?
Um, are there Green Seal-approved alternatives to most of the chemicals used currently by the school district?
There are, and, uh, the school district has actually moved, uh, toward a much more environmentally friendly, uh, position. Uh, we actually use Green Seal products, uh, now in the district. If you
If you walk in the bathrooms, you check the hand soap, it's actually been Green Seal approved. So. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, Ms. Lesheski?
Are the natural products easier for the janitors to use?
Uh, there are devices that actually, that do make it easier to use, um, actually. So. It will be okay.
Mr. Kurtley?
Um, do said devices have any additional cost?
Yes, they, they probably will have a slight, uh, increase in price.
Can you really put a cost on the health of our children? Keep that in mind.
I mean, that's the whole purpose of the district. We're, we care about the children.
Also, the, the cost difference and difference in effectiveness between the two products would be negligible, but the health benefits of the green ones would be very good.
Any other questions or comments? I myself am now afraid to use a hand sanitizer and lemon pledge. Before the school takes a vote, school board takes a vote on this proposal, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Again, I ask you to state your name and school and to keep your comments brief and to the point. They would love to hear from you. Okay, then. Uh, having heard community ca- uh, uh, having not heard community comments, uh, board will now vote on the motion to consider eliminating all chemical cleaning agents from district buildings. Ms. Lau, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtley?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
No.
Ms. Lesheski?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsayer?
Yes.
Ms. Rex?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
The motion to consider the elimination of chemical cleaning agents from the district carries by a vote of eight to one.
Beating no other items of business, I believe Ms. Lau has an announcement regarding the broadcast of these proceedings.
Broadcast of the mock school board meeting, a recording of the meeting will be available online through the school district website at www.wauwatosa schools dot org.
Before we adjourn this evening, on behalf of the participants in tonight's mock school board meeting, I want to thank the Wauwatosa Youth Commission and thank the Wauwatosa School District, school board and, uh, the administration for their support. Uh, thank you for this, thank you for coming this evening. Now, now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.